Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for our men and women in armed services and those who have once again suffered a loss like the community in Allen, Texas? Thank you.
Again, welcome everyone. The requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Such schedule and notice of meetings as posted at the Municipal Building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the daily record for publication on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I direct this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Can we have a roll call, Ms. Jones?
Mrs. Zuccino? Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Larcisus?
Here.
Mrs. Timet?
Here.
Kilachi?
Here.
Sire?
Here.
Here, and just for the board, we are aware that Mrs. Zuccino will not be here today. Moving right along to the approval of the minutes. Mrs. Melendez, would you kindly approve the minutes, please?
A motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Larcisus?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimert?
Yes.
Kilachi?
Yes.
Sire?
Yes.
Dr. Dills?
Yes. Are there any communications and petitions to the boards, the superintendent? Okay, thank you very much. Reports and discussions are the fun part. Dr. Banjia.
I love evenings like this because I'm going to welcome Mrs. Mellie McQueeney, who is our department chair for performing arts, and she is here to recognize our phenomenal middle school and high school performing arts students. So, Mrs. McQueeney?
Good evening, everyone. Music is alive and well in Mount Olive. For seven years in a row, we have been recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants as the best community for music education, and that recognition would not be possible without the work of every single person in this room. The NAMM Foundation recognizes the community for the outstanding efforts of teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who are making music part of a well-rounded education for every child. Mount Olive is rich with an unbelievable student body who makes the decision to go above and beyond on a daily basis. This excelling happens in all avenues, whether it is in class, in the hundreds of clubs offered in Mount Olive, in the robotics competitions with Best Buddies program, or on the athletic field. Tonight, we will be recognizing the incredible talent of our music students. Our music students in classes don't work in isolation on a daily basis. The classes are making music together, but the students here tonight are students who have spent hours in isolation by themselves, preparing for, auditioning for, and successfully participating in some of the most competitive and amazing music groups the state and the country has to offer. It should also be mentioned that our students would not be provided these opportunities if it wasn't for the hard-working music educators that teach them daily. My colleagues, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Burke, Mr. VanZini, Ms. Jimenez, Ms. Garangello, Ms. Burkett, and Mr. Odessa all have students who are being recognized this evening. These teachers supply materials, fill out nomination forms, complete recommendation letters, attend auditions, volunteer to host, volunteer to run a sectional, volunteer to conduct or manage, and of course, attend many of their students' performances. Another thank you needs to be extended to you, the parents and family members, who without all of your support and gas mileage and concert attendance, your children would not be able to participate. And thank you to the Board of Education, our building administrators, Mr. Kevin Stansberry, Dr. Banja, who without all of your support and approvals, many of these opportunities the students have completed would not be possible. Lastly, thank you to our incredible students. You have and continue to make Mount Olive extremely proud, and we are honored to have been part of your musical journey, no matter how far that takes you, and a musical journey that should also be recognized for persisting through a global pandemic. So, the students will now be called up to receive their certificate of excellence for all of their hard work and dedication, and we tried to group the students by the groups that they participated in. So, after I call the last name in that group, if you wouldn't mind holding your applause so all names could be heard, but the students know to come up as soon as their name is called. So, we'll start with the middle school students first. Yes. So, the following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in Morris Area Honor Choir. Aditi Velasamy, Mehta Mahanram, Ryan Brinu, and Richard Wang. Benson, and then Mehta, Mehta. And Ryan. Oh, Richard, did you get the right one? Come here. He took somebody else's for fun. The following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in Morris Area Honor Choir and North Jersey Region Choir. Githika Primkumar and Esther Sabish. The following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Region Choir. Try to stay in this order, people, if you can. Ready? Yeah. Joanne Joseph, Merrill Piopili, Kavya Strajee, Kaylee Taylor, and Rashida Trevetti. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in Morris Area Honor Choir and All-National Honor Choir, Sarah Culcarney. The following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in All-National Honor Choir. Kaden Blakely, Catherine Hoak, and Nicholas Jacobson. And please be sure to look out for Kaden Blakely playing hook in the performance of Peter Pan next weekend. The following students are being recognized as outstanding music student of the month presented by the Mayo Performing Arts Center. Ahana Mukherjee and Andrew Papkovic. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in the New Jersey Region Jazz Combo, Aunt Perique. Congratulations. The following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Junior Area Band. Emily Beatty, Faith Dressel, Catherine Hugh, Maria Christina Ayanki, Do Young Lim, Ratish Raghu, and Nicholas Saponius. Emily, Faith. The following students are being recognized as an outstanding music student of the month presented by the Mayo Performing Arts Center as well as for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Junior Area Band, Michael Alfonno and Anthony Murray. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Junior Area Band and North Jersey Junior Region Band, Derek Maggio. And the following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Junior Region Band, Riley Cerullo. Now, we're moving on to our high school recognitions. So, the following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Region Choir, Nathaniel Decker and Dylan Kovach. The following students are being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in All-National Honor Choir, Leila Blakely, Kayla Marvin, Marin Masajia, and Zoya Vaidya. Marin, yeah? The following student is being recognized as an outstanding music student of the month presented by the Mayo Performing Arts Center, Alex Maratrol. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in New Jersey Region Jazz, Gabriel Serna. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Area Band, Riley Frieswick. Oh, I went out of order. I went out of order once. It's my one mistake, I said. Sorry, it throws Kevin off. So, the following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in New Jersey Region Orchestra, Charlie Stokely. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Area Band, North Jersey Region Band, and New Jersey Allstate Band, Barbara Ashley. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in North Jersey Area Band, North Jersey Region Band, North Jersey Region Jazz Band, and New Jersey Allstate Band, Sylvanas Jumbo. The following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance in New Jersey Allstate Jazz Band, All Eastern Jazz Band, and National Youth Orchestra, Alvaro Caravaca. And last but certainly not least, the following student is being recognized for successfully auditioning for and their exceptional performance, get ready for all these, in North Jersey Area Band, North Jersey Region Band, New Jersey Allstate Band, New Jersey Allstate Orchestra, New Jersey Allstate Jazz Band, and All Eastern Orchestra, Ryan Perichuk. So, we are going into concert season, right? This is literally, it kicks it off, and there's events every single, almost every single night for music. And so, I urge Board of Ed members, administrators, who usually do always still come, and obviously thank you, the parents, I know this was another night out, but I can't, I can't say this enough, and I truly mean it, I'm extremely honored to represent this entire department, students and staff, the facilities, and we have, I'm very, very lucky, and I don't take that for granted every day. I can't thank enough, by the way, Ms. Christine Nelson, who also helped put together all of these certificates with me and double-checked them and triple-checked them with me, so I appreciate all of her work. So, at this time, our music students are more than welcome to leave if they would like to. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for coming.
At this moment, I would like to welcome Dr. Rebecca Kreider, who will be discussing our student safety data systems as well as our HIV report.
Great, thank you very much. Before I get started on that, I wanted to acknowledge Melanie McQueeney and all of her folks that put on that tricky tray on Saturday afternoon. It was all day, and then at night, they were there till about 11:30 and had hundreds of people. All right, did everybody hear my plug for the band? All right, yeah, so Melanie and her team do a great job every year, so I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged them. Okay, so I wanted to start out by telling you about the first half of the year. This is the student safety data systems and HIV report, and it's something that we do bi-annually. So this is information about HIBs and violence vandalism, et cetera, for the first part of our year. So SSDS is the place where we keep information. It's where the state wants us to report what's happening in the district. But what's different that I'm going to tell you a little bit about, to meet the criteria of something that goes into this system has to meet a certain threshold and requirement. So this doesn't mean these are all of the incidents that we've had with violence and vandalism, things along those lines. This is only if we find out who did it and then had discipline and remediation and put in programs. So when you first see some of these numbers, you'll see that they're a little lower than what you expect, but they don't meet the SSDS requirements. Okay, so this is for the elementary school, and right away, if you're like me and a numbers person, you're like, the incident total doesn't add up. So this is HIBs confirmed and HIBs that are alleged. If it's an alleged HIB that is not confirmed, it's not considered an incident from the NJDOE perspective. From our perspective, we treat them all very similar, and we look to make sure that everybody that's involved with it, whether it's founded or unfounded, gets what they need to be successful. So we look at the incident total for Tins Road, for example, it says one, but there were actually two HIBs at the beginning of the year at Tins Road. All right, so that's the elementary perspective. And then from a secondary perspective, as you may expect, incidences were higher. Again, the incident total may not line up with exactly how many were there. And if something is a HIB and it also qualifies for one of these violence vandalism substance or weapons, and they're commingled, it's only counted once. So again, when I first ran this report and spent a long time trying to figure out why some of the numbers didn't actually add up, so if it's an incident that's counted across violence vandalism substance and HIB, it's only counted in that incident total once. And remember, this is only the first part of the year. All right, another part of reporting is we had to ensure that we had trainings for all the different areas. So that's an overview of each school, so you can see them next to each other. Great, we also have to report what HIB trainings and programs we have. So this year, we had Legal One come in a few times, but since we're only counting the first part of the year, we had Legal One come in for an hour, twice, and train all of our anti-bullying specialists at each school and many of the other counselors, so those are the trainings that we had. And each school does a fantastic job of prevention programs and remediation programs. So that just shows you that we have 100 programs that took place in the first part of the year. And those are some examples of some of the programs. So from an elementary perspective, they did a World Smile Day, they do Lunch Bunch, they make sure that new students are welcomed on the playground, so those are some elementary programs. And these are some of our secondary ones also. So we did a HIB video for volunteers, they do stomp out bullying, and working with these anti-bullying coordinators every year, they are a font of knowledge and information, and they find a lot of things that are available that other school districts do that can help our students. So these change year to year, so they always bring in new programs. And in addition to what we have to report to SSDS, I wanted to talk a little bit about other things that we've done. So we had a task force where we met with the anti-bullying specialists and administrators, and we just recently updated our HIB policy. We looked at the new laws, how we worked here in districts, so we reviewed the policies and regulations. Everybody was trained by a three-hour Legal One in-person training session, all administrators, all counselors, whether they were an anti-bullying specialist or not. So we're really trying to solidify the message and importantly, make sure we're consistent across all six schools. We also edited our parent letters, we updated the HIB report we give to the board to give them more information on what was happening. And lastly, we did our HIB self-assessment all day in a room, transparently together, interpreting the different standards and indicators, and we decided on specific scores. Okay, apologize, this is a little hard to see, but this is our district report card from the DOE. So, good news and bad news. The good news is, it exactly matched what we self-reported. So our transparency and collaboration on our self-reporting was fully supported by the NJDOE. And I noted the sections that were significantly different over the years, and I can call your attention to HIB reporting, there's a possibility of six points. We only got three points, but we got three points on how to report a HIB, right? You can email, you can call, we have information on our website, so our ability to get HIB information from families, staff, and students, 100%. What we missed our three points on was putting the appropriate data on the website, issues with the pandemic and reporting, things along those lines. Did we post our self-assessment grades and our last NJDOE report? No. So we lost three points on that. But I assure you, 100% on getting HIB information. And the other thing that we lost points on from recent calculations is really training, and the indicators are ultra-super-specific. And from a training perspective, it's not that we didn't train everybody, we lost a few points on training the safety and climate teams. They got trained on behavioral threat assessment, they got trained on HIB, but there was a little part of the indicator saying, did everyone on those teams get PD in successful school climate programs and services? And we could not say, yes, everybody got trained. So that's where we lost a few points. And also on contracted services and volunteers, we couldn't 100% guarantee that every volunteer that stepped in for the book sale or lunch aids went through HIB training. So that's where we lost recent points on. But from a process and procedure perspective, I think we hit the nail on the head.
Dr. Kreider, clarify two points.
Sure.
You pointed out that our district, the state came back with 68, and that is identical to our self-assessment. Why is that important? Do you want to just clarify that for the, for the board and the public?
Um, yes, so we did some research on what does the state look at and what different parameters do they, do they judge? So when you get the same score as you self-report, you also get kind of a little, you know, commendation saying, you know, thank you for being transparent, because what they sometimes do is they ask for clarification. So if we said we're a 12 out of 12, sometimes we would have to prove it, we didn't have to prove anything. So we told them right away, we're going to be honest. I cannot sign off as the anti-bullying coordinator right now that we hit every volunteer that stepped in the building. We did our best, but I can't guarantee that. So that's the difference.
So this is the first time as a district we were able to match what the state came back to us with?
Um, that's, I believe that's true.
And the second point, all the points that we lost, Eric, that brought us down to 68, are we in compliance right now?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Yep, and we're in negotiations with them to take out the volunteer part, because we don't have a lot of volunteers. So I, we, we're trying to get that changed too, to say if you have volunteers that come into your building. So yes, we're fully in compliance with everything now and next year. This should be significantly better. Great, thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? George, Dr. Giordano?
Several questions.
Sure.
Can we put this on? It is on? All right, thank you. First of all, with the middle school, I can't see that one. That's terrible. Is that a 68? For the middle school?
63. Middle school is 63.
63?
Yeah, the school's...
Okay, they go down. I thought it was a little bit low, and I guess I was wrong from the number I saw when we approved that back in the fall. Do we have the breakdown, do the boards see the breakdown of how they self-assess themselves? Because I know there's categories, like at the high school, they lost points because they were finishing their investigations within 10 days. Do you have that information?
Yeah, it's posted on the website.
Okay, okay.
So just look under self-assessment grades.
Okay, all right. So I am thankful that we are being honest in our self-assessment, although I'm a little disappointed that our grades are as low as they are. I mean, it doesn't take Helen Keller to see it's kind of pathetic. So I would like to task you, Dr. Bangia, is with that, that new position that we can see an org chart go through personnel, with that new director of Student Services, who are going to see HIV, literally has the ability to direct the building level administrators. Because as far as I can tell, this is not an ABS problem, this is an ABC problem and a building level administrator problem. And that's why I'm hopeful we have a plan in place that's going to address, address this, so that we don't have to see this again after we just settled like a million-dollar HIV lawsuit.
And certainly, and to your point, HIV is a center of focus as a district. And certainly the work that we've been doing for the past six-plus months is in order to rectify those. Dr. Kreider, do you want to?
Uh, yeah, I can expand on that. Excellent question, and I understand your point. We have made some systemic changes also. We used to have one anti-bullying specialist in each building, so yes, on occasion, our 10-day timeframe gets compromised. So what we have in every building is a secondary ABS, and for the most part, they completely split the work evenly. At the middle school, we're kind of working through that right now, but we have six counselors at the middle school that are now certified and have been through training to also act as an ABS. And Anthony, to your point, that's why we had all administrators in training and kind of redefined a little bit about who does what in the step, so I agree.
Certainly, I think one of the parts is that we, as a district, hit a little reset button to ensure that all the members of our administrative team, whether it be building level, who also are anti-bullying specialists, are on the same page of their background understanding and also widening this amount of individuals involved in the process. So more knowledge is more power.
Right, and if I can add one more thing, kind of a second thing that we did too, is we as a group looked at all the HIBs that came in, and they're often unfounded. For a peer conflict to meet the criteria of a HIB, it's extraordinarily specific. So it's safe to say at least half of our HIBs on first review, you know already it's not going to qualify. So what we've done is we've created a code of conduct form on our website, and we did a parent meeting the other night, which is on YouTube. So if you go to MOTV, you can see a YouTube presentation that the ABSs and myself and Dr. Bangia did to kind of explain to parents, and we had staff watch it. If you have an issue, if your child is undergoing some sort of peer conflict, let the counselor know right away. And if you want to make it more official, hop on our website to where the HIB information is, and you can choose either code of conduct or HIB, so things kind of get through, get through administration a little more quickly.
One more question. What's the, what's the total possible score every school received?
78.
Well, it's rhetorical. It's 78. So I know we praise all the great things we do in this district, and we just saw with our music and everything else, and they're like, this is something that, that really needs to be fixed.
And certainly, as the actions that Dr. Kreider meets with her team, we are certainly cognizant, and we are aware of the areas of needs of growth, and we're making steps to remedy that, to ensure that we get closer to that 78, because we certainly want to be, get the perfect score. But certainly, you know, to Dr. Kreider's point, is a part of it's also educating, right? And that's one of the first steps we did as a district, is have a parent night the other night for parents to also be aware as far as what the process is involved and how it compares to code of conduct. So we are taking the important steps in order to address this very important issue.
Any other questions?
Just, just a comment, and I just want to echo what Dr. Giordano brought up. And to say that Dr. Bangia and I were having some electronic communication about my concern about the restructuring of the high school, the addition of a new vice principal a few years ago for the board members. That was supposed to be the turning point for addressing some of the concerns at the middle school, because the middle school has been a source of concern regarding HIV for quite some time. And so I am comfortable and confident that between your comments, Dr. Giordano, and maybe other members of the board, and my electronic communications, that the administration's going to be laser-focused on addressing the HIV concerns, whether they're founded or unfounded. Even if they're code of conduct issues, there still needs to be, with, with the plethora of programs that you just posed on the board, we should see a, some significant positive impact from those programs, so.
And I'd also like to point out, the district should be committed for, you know, the expansion of our counseling team as well. You know, when you look at it from a K-12 perspective, you know, all of our elementary schools have two, at least two counselors in each building, and we've added numerous counselors both to the middle school and high school. So as a district, you know, we have dedicated ourselves to ensure that we're cultivating an environment that our students feel comfortable, and certainly also a process now in which the adults who are in charge are competent and capable in order to ensure that we're implementing the proper procedures in relation to HIV.
Right, so hopefully this time next year, when they're reporting on how the changes happen for this year, this number will go up.
Yep, and we know middle schools are a tough, tough time for our young people.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kreider.
Anything else?
I think it took enough of your time. I think 35 minutes here, about two presentations, so I'll yield myself to, I guess, the rest of the committees.
Okay, so are there any other questions or comments from the board regarding the superintendent's report? Okay, well, I'll just close this out with, I know that the artists have left and their parents, but what an amazing group of students. And it's interesting how I can recognize faces now. I might not know all the names, but I saw a couple of kids who came up who were part of Annie, which was just amazing. I'm like, oh, I know her, oh! And these kids are just incredible, our jazz musicians and orchestra. We have a tremendous pipeline, and it's just great to see the kids thriving. And it just reminds us that here in Mount Olive, there's something for everyone to take advantage of, be a part of, and identify something that they're passionate about. So congratulations to our music department, Mrs. McQueeney, Mr. Hendricks, and the administration who supports that. Okay, moving right along to personnel, Mrs. Weeman.
Yes, we met on May 1st. It was myself, Mrs. Aquino, Mr. Zaire, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Kreider, and Dr. Gail showed up at the end of the meeting. We discussed the successful job fair that took place on April 19th. As of May 3rd, we hired seven candidates from the, from the job fairs. There were three onsite fairs this year, all of which yielded candidates, so we saw it was a very successful thing that we had done, having the job fairs. Dr. Kreider talked about the Ramapo Archway project to increase the strength of our candidate pipeline. The partnership would benefit both the Ramapo students with a robust district-wide student-teacher experience here at Mount Olive. And then we would have from that a significant number of student teachers available each year, and then also they have the dual role of being substitutes as well as student aides. We reviewed the non-tenured returning staff list, we discussed the staff that would not be renewed, non-tenure admin feedback was shared by Dr. Bangia. And lastly, some job descriptions created for the pandemic and paid out of the grant funding, which we no longer had, so they had to be abolished. And some summer program job descriptions were combined, so we didn't get rid of anything, we just reassigned. And then we just edited our job descriptions so that we didn't lose anything. Dr. Bangia?
I just want to add that we got notice today that we were accepted into the Ramapo program, so we're one of the few districts across the state to have that partnership. So thank you to Dr. Kreider for spearheading that. So we're very excited about having that pipeline of future educators, as also the support as far as substitutes for next year.
Yes. That's it.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we have our curriculum and technology committee report. Is there a committee member who is going to read in Mrs. Aquino's absence?
No, it would be Dr. Gail.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so CNT met on Monday at 4:45. It was Ms. Aquino, Ms. Melendez, Mr. Rossi, Ms. Galligan, Senora Cruz, Ms. Stazak, Ms. Huffman, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Carter, Mr. Robinson, it was a full house. Ms. Galligan, Ms. Rossi, and Senora Cruz presented on the international trips. And Ms. Melendez jumping here when you have the chance. The entire committee was impressed with the trips that they take the students on, how the students network, they still stay in touch. A lot of the other school districts from across the country and even the international students they meet. It's really learning experience, and they, it's just that sightseeing, they really talk about even looking at the curriculum at the high school level and middle school level of cross-curriculum, so they study some of social studies in Greece. They try to do a Greece trip with their students who are studying in Greece. So we're really impressed at everything they do. I think it's the first time, if I can recall, that they ever presented. Then we got a special education year review from Ms. Stazak, Ms. Huffman. Once again, you know, I personally believe our special ed, although we can always look to improve, is probably one of the best in the county. We talked about the challenges, you know, especially the elementary that's happening all across the state, especially in North Jersey with a lot more students coming out early interventioning services. And they can come out at any time, so you really can't plan for those numbers, because you could have, you know, kids come out of the hopper in November, and you're going to plan for another preschool expansion, you have to open another preschool disabled class. And, you know, they spoke about that. Ms. Huffman, Ms. Stazak also spoke about taking a harder look at our paraprofessional usage, where to best apply, you know, not laying off staff members, but where to best apply those staff members when needed, and being able to move them to program to program if need be, as opposed to going out and hiring more staff. So they're going to take a hard look at that, but other than that, the committee was pretty impressed with everything they had. They also shared a lot of the PD opportunities that special educators had in the district. Mr. Robinson discussed the RIT benchmarking and blended learning platforms. He's going to come back with a proposal to maybe consolidate a lot of those into one platform. He hasn't really, you know, put a team together to look at that, and he'll be making recommendations to the CNT committee probably in June, July, some of that points, so we'll report that back out to the full board. Curriculum and running timeline, Dr. Bangia and Mr. Robinson shared the three-year plan for curriculum revision, and it starts for the summer of 2023, which will be the first phase, so the committee was on board with that. We got the presentation from Dr. Carter in our committee first, so we were pleased with that. Not, wasn't so pleased with HIV grades, but everything else. And data monitoring, Dr. Carter shared that the district will retain to use Bark to pick up when students are emailing or anything comes across that's potentially dangerous for the students, who are going to put themselves in harm way. So we're going to do that. I believe we're dropping gaggle. Bark's a little bit cheaper and it produces a little bit more. Dr. Carter did the research, so Bark, gaggle is actually limiting what Bark could pick up on. It was more proprietary. So they feel that Bark will do just as much, as opposed to the two systems. And then we just went over the action items, a lot of field trips, and the committee supported all those action items. Ms. Melendez?
You covered it.
I get all, that's all I have, Ms. Robinson.
You covered it. Excellent, yes. We were very impressed with the international travel and how the faculty get the group of students to visit different countries. They did a presentation with a couple of videos, and they integrated curriculum with the visits that they are doing at those countries that have pertinence to the students also. And also the students are able to practice the language that they are studying at the high school curriculum. And especially, Ed was very impressed. They are working very hard, like you said, for studying the resources that they have and how they're distributed across the district. Yes, you covered everything.
Fantastic, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Fantastic. Seeing none? Moving right along to finance and operations, Mrs. Desiree.
Yes, so finance and operations met on May 1st. In attendance was Mr. Undoner, Ms. Gail Libby, Dr. Bangia, myself, Ms. Wmet, and Dr. Gales was there for the majority of the meeting. Facilities updates, they started digging the foundation for the risers paid by the PTO for the classroom outside Tens Road. They encountered some unexpected rocks, so it slowed up a little bit, but they're still working through. The radio project met with the township police to work out network connectivity issues between the district and the police, and we are definitely believing that the system should be fully functional by the end of June. We had to go out for a bid for a pack boiler replacement project. The cost projections were provided. We're also looking into creating a two-smaller boiler system to ensure redundancy. And that will, as that flushes out, we will make our decision from there. Facilities is working on the fields, CMS, and Mountain View for recreational programs. This is, you know, a financial cost to our workforce, but we're hoping to get the recreation to help with volunteering, to address the needs of both their programs and assist us. We've moved over to safe school training for the custodial and maintenance staff. This is a thousand-dollar savings. Every little bit helps. There was a roof leak at the Mount Olive High School coach's office and is going to be addressed and taking care of the referendum, and the security office closet in the auditorium is in the 23, 24 budget. For the security updates, ninety-nine summonses were issued for the passing of stop-school buses. It's actually below a hundred, so that's pretty encouraging. Sadly, just below a hundred. Four court sessions were held by the Mount Olive Police Department. In the month of April, a hundred, thirty-nine cases were held, and all were found guilty. Nice job. Thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars was collected by the township. Of course, the township doesn't get all that money, but that was what they received. Bark and gaggle, thirty-nine barks, forty-four gaggles. Were addressed. Two residency investigations took place. They were, the routine work for security was, you know, scheduling security, discovery for individuals and attorneys for the bus tickets. Our security and fire drills were held throughout the district for the month to make sure that we're in compliance and they were effective. We reviewed BTAM reports district-wide, and all the security incidents and reports were reviewed. Two students were caught vaping in the high school, and two students were caught vandalizing bathrooms at the high school. And several students were caught vandalizing a vending machine located at the high school. The Mount Olive Police Department are involved. Security also helped in the investigation, district-wide, is on HIB investigations. They also discussed the district-wide radio project, which I've already discussed. The NSIG Jersey School Insurance Group safety grant was completed and submitted, and a debriefing meeting on the April 19 incident was taken care of. Again, kudos and applause to our staff, especially our security staff and our Mount Olive Police Department for addressing that issue. Discussion items, we did talk about the negative lunch balances due to the recent high level of lunch overages. Our vendor partner, Sodexo, absorbed some of the cost. The district are, we're going to be reaching out to families to address these concerns. We're also going to look proactively to put in mechanisms to address balances at different levels moving forward. We also would like to recommend to people, families out there, to reapply for free and reduced lunch programs, even if you were denied previously. Situations may have changed, and there are resources out there for you. We talked about received student contracts, and we're currently working to address that. We discussed the appointment of the board attorney. The current legal season is looking to renew the contract, and we will move forward discussing that, and the board will take, after discussion, will take action. And then the action items are on the agenda with explanations for the public and for us, so if anybody has any questions.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Alright. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, fantastic. Moving right along, policy and governance. Mrs. Fenton?
Hi, thanks. So we met May 1st, and attending were myself, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Melendez, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Carter, and Ms. Jones. We had one discussion item, a policy alert number 230. Dr. Bangia reviewed the new policy alert issued by our consultant, Strauss Esme. The committee agreed to include the new revised policies on this evening's agenda for the first reading. And our action items, we have a second reading on Title I, the HIB and postnatal accommodations. And then we have our first reading, as I said before, on policy number 230. That is it.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? We will now move on to board subcommittee and parent-teacher association liaison reports. And while we set up our microphone, if there are any PTO, PTA, CMS, SCA representatives who would like to come up and share the school district's activities, please, the mic is open for your comments. Okay. Seeing none? Did any board member attend a PTO meeting, SCA meeting? Okay.
No, but I'd like to make an announcement that the Mount Olive High School PTO meeting will be on May 16th at 7:00 PM. I believe it's in the commons, so hope to see people there.
Thank you very much. Board president's report, have nothing at this time, so we'll move on to public comments. Members of the community may comment on any action items.
Dr. Gales, I'm sorry, just, subcommittee was, we met with Emo, myself, Dr. Giordano, and Ms. Aquino, with Mr. Roselli, and very nice talks. We're going along well and moving forward positively.
Right, that's always good to hear. Anyone else? Okay, public comments. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene language or comments will not be accepted. So the floor is open for comments on action items and action items only.
Hi, my name is Trista Kay. I'm at 28 Josinda Road, Flanders. I would just like to make a comment about action item 9.10, the approval of the submission of capital projects to the NJDOE for the purposes of the projected referendum. I just had a question, because at the February 27th board event meeting, the referendum committee update said there would be, and this is a quote from the video, "an open meeting for the public on March 20th that'll be at night will broadcast it." So I've been following and waiting and hoping that that open public meeting would happen, but here, now we see that it's moving forward to the NJDOE for approval. So I just had a question as to why that meeting didn't move forward, or is that something that will happen soon? Thank you.
And I'm going to defer to Mr. Stralaci as well as Dr. Bangia.
You're my guest.
Certainly, we did have a public meeting on March 20th that was open to our referendum committee members, so that meeting did take place.
I guess I would just like to say, in listening to the meeting, I knew there was a committee made up of members of the public, but that is not the same thing as an open public meeting being broadcasted. So I guess I would just like to register my disappointment and the hope that in the future, that could happen, because I thought it was a great idea. So, thank you.
So was the meeting advertised as being broadcast?
So it's not, it's, as a resident pointed out, it was our referendum public group that was met. So it was shared with those who were invited to attend. So we had a compilation of district employees as well as public. We had invited close to a hundred people to attend.
Thank you.
Martin Wells, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Butler, New Jersey. I just have one question concerning the outstanding lunch balances. Can we do fundraising to help those families that may need help to pay off those balances? Is there anything rule policy against that?
There is no policy against that, no.
Alright, is there any way if someone could actually give me a number and I'll see if I can help the families that maybe need to take care of those balances? I don't even know who has it. I just want the total sums, and I can see if I can do to raise money for it.
We certainly can't give out names. That's very confidential information.
Yeah, I don't need names.
You just want the total figure?
Yeah, so I can see how to do it to raise money for it.
We can make that work.
A dollar members public.
I can leave it to you.
Okay, if you could send me an email on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Bangia, do we have any update on the crowdfunding, GoFundMe?
So as you recall, a couple of months ago, we did have a GoFundMe account in which there was a family in town who was looking to JARG, GARDER funds. At this point, I have no specifics as far as what their final number was. They told me they would follow up with me when those funds are finalized. And they were fundraising for the figure of amounts that were from previous school years.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on action items? Okay, we're going to close the public comment section on action items and move to the approval of monthly expenditures. And I am going to ask Dr. Giordano if he would do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the recommendation of the acting superintendent, approval of the monthly expenditures, 6.1 to 6.4.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Ms. Narcisse?
Yes.
Yes, except for Mrs. Cecilia.
Mr. Stralaci?
Oh, the name of Bosch, appears, Jody Bosch, I abstain, everything else, yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes. Personnel action items, Mrs. Weeman?
Yes, I make a motion upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move 7-1 through 7-3-3.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Defis on 33 years of helping our students, and I hope she has a wonderful next adventure.
Here, here.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Weeman?
Yes.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Abstaining, 7.10, yes to all the others.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And Dr. Gales?
Yes. Curriculum and technology, will you be doing that, Dr. Giordano?
Yes, sir. On recommendation of the acting superintendent, I make a motion to approve curriculum and technology action items, 8.1 through 8.6.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weeman?
Yes, and everything on the 8-1. I abstain on the CCM Teen Arts Festival, but I'm so happy that our students get to participate in it.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
I will abstain on 8.5, yes to everything else. Finance and operations, Mrs. Desiree.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion based on the suggestion of the acting superintendent to move action items 9.1 to 9.9.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weeman?
Yes.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes, and hoping that 9.2 will get us a little bit more attention from the state regarding our bus drivers. Administrative action items, Mrs. Fenton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the acting superintendent to approve 10.1 to 10.23.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weeman?
Yes.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
And Dr. Gales?
Yes, public comments.
I got one thing. So I missed 9.10. So I would like to make a motion on the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move 9.10.
We added that to 10.
It's 10.23.
That's 10.23, right?
No, it's not yet.
Not going to do it yet?
We don't-
I'm two weeks early.
No, no.
It's 10.323.
10.23.
It should be under administrative and settled by us.
I've just read my email.
You're so smart, Desiree. You're so smart, Mr. Zire.
Public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be accepted. The floor is open for comments on anything pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Martin Wellsmore, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. I did have a few other questions, but I'm gonna let four of them go for today. I just have one question here, and I'm gonna read it out loud and then give a little statement after that. Mrs. Zimber, we all know full and well that you don't pay attention to your own personal and professional conflicts, but don't you have a duty to your clients to keep them from getting in trouble? Or was it that, that you were so blinded by your revenge that you abandoned your adherence to professional standards, ethics, and overall Board of Ed bylaws? Number two, and finally, I'd like to say the following. I once again request that you resign in order to safeguard the integrity of the Mount Olive Board of Ed School District, which I believe you have compromised by sharing confidential emails with individuals who didn't need to know, and have, in those confidential emails. So, I mean it again, and I will do this every single board meeting, to ask you to resign. Will you resign tonight?
Yes.
I also wanna make a comment that I emailed the whole board about another school district, was I'm proud of them, going out for an RFP for the attorneys. Every board member received a copy of that RFP, it was written correspondence, and it wasn't mentioned this morning, I would wish that would have been mentioned, that you could get written correspondence. And I really want you guys to consider going out for RFPs, that I was promised last year when Stralaci was the president, was something that you haven't done for years, okay? So, I think you have a fiduciary obligation to the township to go out for the RFPs, okay? And you also need to hold the vendors to code of conduct and ethics as well, as we do our staff. So, this is code of conduct matters for everyone, and please go out for the RFPs for the integrity of Mount Olive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kevin Cullen, 25 Richard Drive, Flanders, New Jersey. I'm a resident of Mount Olive and an athletic director at Black River Middle School in Chester. On Tuesday, April 25th, I was informed at 11 o'clock in the morning that a game scheduled between Mount Olive Middle School and Black River Middle School in baseball and softball would need to be canceled because the athletic department put in a request for busing that morning. And the solution to not having any more buses was just to pull the buses from the middle school baseball and softball teams and give it to somebody else, because high school sports take precedent. I wrote an email, and I think you all have received it, expressing my disappointment, especially as a taxpaying resident of this town, and a solution was found. However, I was told that I needed to understand how gracious the transportation and athletic department were in getting this done. If I hadn't sent an email and the game was canceled with the district considering the graciousness of disappointed players, the grounds crew already prepared the field, the umpire, and parents who organized their schedules to be there. By 11 o'clock on a sunny day, no one typically has any concerns about a cancellation. And if something goes awry for me in a similar situation, I am apologizing up and down to my contact at the other school district. Working closely with the transportation department where I work, I know firsthand the difficulties of obtaining bus drivers that have arisen since COVID. And in any other situation, I would have been gracious to Mount Olive's plight. If I didn't know that in October of this year, the board was resented with a proposal to go into an agreement with Jefferson to help provide busing for just this situation. I also know that several bus drivers, on at least two occasions, approached the board to allege that these extra trips after school activities were not being offered to them, that there were enough drivers to fill the need. I'm not sure who's right, but when this incident arose, that's the first thing I thought of. Are the allegations true, and these trips still aren't being offered to the bus drivers? And if they are being posted, and the drivers just can't cover the trips, because there's not enough of them, why hasn't the board reconsidered the agreement with Jefferson, which that was supposed to solve? In this game, the only one losing are the kids. Much like the solution to the busing issue in April was to just eliminate the middle school trip, an overall solution would also be just to reduce the number of events that need buses after school. And that could be accomplished by eliminating middle school sports. There is a rumor that is flying around among middle school A.D.s in Morris County that Mount Olive will be eliminating middle school sports except for wrestling and field hockey for next school year. The district loves to throw around the words equity and inclusion when they want to sway people to their way of thinking. I can personally tell you of how that word inclusion was used to deprive my daughter and others like her when the Special Education Department decided to eliminate the resource room placement in elementary school a few years ago. We were sold a bill of goods, how inclusion would be a benefit, but it was at the expense of my child and others like her. I'm willing to talk with anybody privately on that side issue, if you wish. Thankfully, I will say this, Mrs. Dave Stack, I think I got her name wrong, has been wonderful in thinking outside of the box this year as my daughter entered the middle school setting. But where is the talk of equity and inclusion when it comes to middle school sports? I am thankful that I was able to play baseball through college. I thank volunteers in my town for providing the opportunities my parents could not afford otherwise. In today's climate, for-profit sports academies is the rage. I question though, if I was growing up in this day and age, and my parents did what they did for a living, if they could have afforded that. Some families struggle to pay $5,000 plus at times to have their child play on some of these travel sports teams. Friends have expressed that they see Mount Olive middle school sports teams as the opportunity for their children to get the playing time at a high level while freeing them of a major expense. By eliminating middle school sports, the continuation of scrounging and sacrificing will be the only option for some families. Middle school sports programs also eliminate the phenomenon of daddy ball, where certain players get playing time in preference of a position based on their dad being the coach or his friend. If equity is a guiding principle, all the sports would be eliminated or none would. How is only keeping two equitable to the kids who play all the rest? When you walk into the middle school gym, in fact, if you just go out there, you see the trophy case of all the accomplishments that Mount Olive Middle School have accomplished. And when you go into the gym, you see the banners of the championships that they've won. A few years ago, as the Black River Middle School soccer coach, I was whooped by the Mount Olive middle school boys soccer team. And they went on to win the county championship. And I'm gonna tell you something, even though I got whooped, and my boys got whooped that day, I was proud of every kid from my town and proud of the parents, the families they represented. I was also happy for two men who I've always respected and enjoyed coaching against, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Reber, who I know were not only stealing good soccer skills, but good values into those boys. As an assistant softball coach, I've had the pleasure of interacting with Mrs. LaValle. I am delighted my daughter has a positive role model such as Mrs. LaValle as her teacher this year. As any coach, you see a different side of your students on the athletic field, and they see a different side of their teachers. Interscholastic athletics is part of the holistic experience that most of us enjoyed and learned from growing up. Intermurals are a wonderful opportunity as well, and I would encourage Mount Olive to pursue that. But as someone who has played and led both intermurals and interscholastic, intermurals do not compare to the needs of student athletes who need a greater challenge. Intermurals do not make a community come together to celebrate kids like the county title does. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we will close the public comments. Is there any old business from the board? Any new business? Okay, board comments, and we will start with Mrs. Fenton.
Thank you. Going first all the time, and I have comments this time. I just wanna congratulate the music department, all the teachers and staff that make that happen for them. It's a very special area, and I'm so proud of all our students. I wanna thank Dr. Kreider for the presentation, that's a very important thing we need to work on, and I'm glad we're taking the opportunity to do this. I'd love to welcome back Mrs. Curry and Mr. Moore. I'm glad to see you guys up and around again. I'm excited for the end of the year, thank you for the graduation note, I think, did you send that out? Thank you, so now all our parents can know what's going on as we make our way to the end of school. And I'd also like to mention Dr. Zawiki. I'm sorry to see him go, but I am very happy and I feel very strongly that we are in perfect hands, and thank you for continuing making this school great. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zire?
So, I'm gonna short sweep too, I'd like to also congratulate the music award recipients. Remind everybody that the Peter Pan tickets are on, started to be on sale today at 5 o'clock, which is a great little story about a boy that won't grow up, can kind of live it. And lastly, I'd like to thank, this time, I'd like to thank our bus drivers and our cafeteria staff for all that they do. It's probably one of the tougher jobs, as they are dealing with students in what we call unstructured time, and can be very taxing. And I know for a fact, I've actually witnessed a bus driver do something that I could never do, and it was, someone was late for the bus, and they kept the door open and waited as this individual walked, well, to the bus instead of running to the bus, and just kept looking at their phone, and I just felt my, that I'm gonna close the door, and kept driving, but, so I do wanna thank them for everything that they do. So, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Dr. Giordano?
Thank you, Dr. Gales, I'd just like to reiterate, you know, I believe this district is probably one of the best in Morse County, although there are areas we need to improve upon, I'm gonna be a labor, a horse, but I'm hopeful, finally, after 2011, this law was implemented, 12 years, I will start getting this right. It's not a new law, and we're moving forward, so, putting the weight of the world on your shoulders, Dr. Bangia, okay?
Up to the challenge.
That's all I ask for.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wehman?
Also wanted to recognize the music students' recognition. I'm so happy, because so many people that I hear from other districts that say, "How come Mount Olive does this? Well, why don't we do it, and why don't you do it?" is what I typically say to them. And I'm so glad, and we showcase everybody, we don't just showcase sports, we don't just showcase this or that. We showcase every student, because we're proud of every student and what their accomplishments are, no matter what they are. And that's why it makes it so fulfilling to be a board member, to see this, and be so proud of the students that are in front of us. Thank you again to Mrs. McQueenie and Mr. Hendricks. And if I can just go quickly and just read a letter that was sent to all of us, but I think it should be, just so it's for the record, from Maria Lane Mammon, I wanna take this opportunity to send my kudos to the child study team, which included interventionist Shelley Cridio, general education teacher, Mary K., Mrs. Hop, that's what I used to call her, occupational therapist, Barbara Madder, school psychologist, case manager, Allison Castner, LDTC, Deborah Redner, interventionist, Anne Marie Hall, speech and language therapist, Diane Layman, special education teacher, Ashley Singwell. With a special thank you to Dr. Hall, Mrs. Hop, Ms. Singwell for their added expertise and concern. She said, "I was impressed with their thoroughness, expertise, and concern." She is an educator for the last 55 years and a resident of Mount Olive for 50 years. Professionalism of this child study team and the support from Jennifer Curry was outstanding. Their sincere concern for the educational outcome was impressive. Once again, Sandshore School has exceeded expectations. This wonderful team should be applauded for their intellectual approach to guiding parents. Welcome back, Ms. Curry. Thank you all, it's wonderful to know that we have such concerned educators at our Sandshore schools. I applaud you, Ms. Curry, and this excellent team. And I wanna say, I'm so proud to say we have educators and administrators and staff at every school that we are all proud of. But it's nice when someone puts those words onto paper to recognize people like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wehman.
Mrs. Melendez?
Hi, I would like to recognize the music department, always, I have it close to my heart. And they're great, Ms. Westing, she was with my, two of my kids, and she was wonderful, and is wonderful. And all those amazing students that go through that department, and then even when they graduate, they keep going in their music. Even as a career, as a hobby, they decompress. Always that music from Mount Olive is in their heart, follow them, the life. I would like to congratulate their retirees, I'm so jealous of them, but I wish them the best. It's a very station light that you look for other activities and do what we cannot do because we are working. So, go ahead and enjoy retirement. I would like also to congratulate the Air Force Junior Army T.C. They had their award ceremony, and I had the pleasure to attend. It was very exciting and amazing how those young fine gentlemen's and ladies are part of that excellent group, and how all the accomplishments that they have done, not only local, but national awards also were granted to them. Also, I wish them the best, they will have their Air Force Junior Army T.C. Military Ball this upcoming on Friday at Picatinny Arsenal. And I will be there, enjoying with them and celebrating with them, and they have invited past commanders also. And parents and students are going to be in attendance in a wonderful night to celebrate this school year that they have. Thank you to all of you, because this district, not only we do the best, but we look for opportunities where we can improve. And that's very important, not only staying the same, but look to improve. Those areas that we can do some change and that need to be improved, and we tackle them and check how we can work on them to improve for a better, even better school district that we have, because other school districts look at our school district to see what we are doing. So, it is important not be in the bubble, but always to look like Dr. Giordano mentioned, those areas that we can improve. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Narcisse?
Wanted to say, welcome back, Mr. Moore and Mrs. Curry. Glad to see you guys on the mend. And congratulations and thank you to all of our music department. Everybody knows it's a department that's very dear to my heart. Both my children participate, and they have amazing educators that really embrace their talent and bring it out in them. And Mr. Cullen, thank you for your comments, they don't fall on deaf ears. That's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stralaci?
Thank you. In 1994, 95, when the town still voted on our budget, one year they cut us a billion dollars, and next year they cut us a half a million dollars. In 1996, we were going to cut all elementary music and choral programs. At the last minute, we were able to find the money by looking towards our surplus at the end of the year. Otherwise, we were going to put that out as a second question. And a second question, you need two-thirds to vote. I have never seen anything pass with two-thirds to vote. I'm very happy we put that back in the budget, because tonight was the fruit of that labor. Because if we had cut that program, that feeder program, I doubt whether you would have seen the amount of awards that were given out in music this evening. It's very important. The other thing is too, I'd like to welcome Mr. Moore back too. Glad to see you, I understand you're coaching basketball next year, is that, that's me? Is that just a rumor? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Oh, Dr. Gales, I forgot to mention one thing, I'm sorry. May 20th is our breakfast with a board member at the board office from 9 to 11. Did the notices go out yet, Dr. Bangia? Tomorrow. Tomorrow, oh, tomorrow, thank you, okay. Thank you.
And they're in English and in Spanish?
Yes, they are.
Alright, well, congratulations, long time coming. So, and I will finish this off with congratulations, and other congratulations to Mr. Moore and Ms. Curry for their return. And he's not coaching basketball, he was actually gonna play in the 50-and-over league with me and Wayne. We need a center. But welcome back to the both of you.
He's back in shape now.
Congratulations to our retirees, and thank you to- Congratulations to our retirees and thank you to our parents and administrators who, uh, came out and stuck with us tonight. Uh, Mr. Cullen, again, I agree that, that we appreciate your comments. And transportation, uh, for our students and after school programs are very important to us. I'm glad that there was a solution found, uh, in the short term, but this board continues to look for, uh, long-term solutions. So, we appreciate your comments. I am happy that we are looking at, even though we approved the list tonight, we're looking at all of the learning platforms that we purchased over the years and hopefully we will begin to streamline. And finally, I had the, the opportunity on Saturday to go to a seminar held at the Senior Center. And the seminar focused on creating a, uh, community emergency response team to help locate, uh, community members who, uh, may be diagnosed with autism or dementia. And we had, uh, members from our first responders. We've had Sharon Stasak. I was very happy to see Sharon show up. And it was very informative. I could only stay for an hour because of other commitments, but I think it would be very worthwhile for our community to really embrace this idea, uh, to establish a community emergency response team so that in the event we have a child go missing, a child elope, or an adult, that we have them on a registry, we know who they are, we know who the first responders will be, and we can immediately go into action. And I want to thank, uh, Daniel and Danielle Wilkie who spearheaded putting this together. It's really a testament to what we can do as a community when we're passionate about something and I was happy to, to play a small part in it. So, we look forward to actually hearing more about it. I know Dr. Bangea will hear a lot about it from Sharon if you haven't already, but it was a very worthwhile. And on that note, I need a motion to go into closed session.
To move.
All in favor? Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, being so resolved that the board will go into a closed session for discussion on confidential student matters, uh, please keep in mind that, uh, closed session discussions are confidential until the need for confidentiality note longer exists. We are in closed session. Action may be taken.
I'd like to have a motion to go back.
You don't need a motion, just a roll call, actually.
Why are you stealing my thunder?
Knock it down.
Well, thank you, Mark. Can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Jones?
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Ms. Melendez?
Here.
Ms. Narcisse?
Here.
Ms. Wehmet?
Here.
Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gels.
Here. We have two action items that Mrs. Zimmer is going to read and we will take our vote.
Okay. Motion number one is resolved that pupil ID number 110573 is hereby suspended through the balance of the school year on home instruction, and be further resolved that the pupil is not permitted on school property or to attend any school-sponsored events or activities or to march in June 2023 graduation exercises.
Still moved.
Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Ms. Narcisse?
Abstain.
Ms. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Chalaci?
Yes, on one. Abstain on two.
I abstain.
No, the first one.
This is the first one.
This is the suspension.
We're just doing the first one?
Yes.
Yes, on the first.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Dr. Gels.
Yes. And now we have the second one.
Resolved that the board affirms the finding of HIV in case number 245687SE03232023 discussed during this evening's executive session, and be further resolved that the parent shall be provided with a written decision along with information on their right of appeal.
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the board? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
No.
Dr. Giordano?
No.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Ms. Narcisse?
Yes.
Ms. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Chalaci?
Abstain.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Dr. Gels?
Yes.
The motion was approved.
Okay. Before we went to close session, we didn't give Dr. Banji an opportunity to make any closing remarks. Would you like to close this out?
I would like to remind the public we have our second parent workshop with workers' behavioral health this coming Thursday, and the topics will be anxiety and depression. The session will start at seven o'clock in the pack at the high school. If you're unable to attend in person, it will also be livestreamed and recorded. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to dismiss?
No.
To move?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are dismissed. Meeting adjourned.